Ms. Hallie, if you would.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. Help us never to forget, Father, that we are empty pitches before full fountain. We ask that you fill us up tonight with your grace and your mercy. We ask that you fill us up with your love. We ask that you fill us up with civility, Lord. And we give you all the honor and glory that is due you. Heavenly Father, this evening, we ask that you come into this board meeting and put your loving arms of protection around us. Help us to make the decisions, Lord, that are good for this school district. We ask you to continue to put your arms of protection around all our children. Lord, we ask that you put your protection around those in the village that help raise our children. Heavenly Father, this evening, not for alone, prayer, but for the uttermost parts of our hearts. We just want to say thank you for one more day. And we, Lord, are not worthy, but you truly are worthy to be praised. And this evening, we give you all the praise and glory that is due you. And it's in your name we pray, and it's in your name we count it all done. Amen.
Call the Kershaw County School Board of Trustees Meeting to order. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Properly motioned by Ms. Autumn, seconded by Coach Blackman. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and that's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda approving meeting minutes for August the sixth board meeting? Properly motioned by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Ira. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and that's unanimous. We want to thank each and everyone for coming out this evening. Judge Johnson with W P U B. Thanks for being here. And we are delighted to have our special guest tonight for our school board meeting. Ms. Deborah McQueen, a school laser program manager for Short Air Force Base, South Carolina. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Our next item is School Board Association Recognition.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Smith if you would join me, Ms. Hallie if you would also join me, and Dr. King if you would join me out front, please. But tonight, we get to recognize three of our board members for reaching new milestones in the South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute. It was established in 1982. The South Carolina School Boards Association Boardsmanship Institute offers year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. Board members are recognized for reaching each of six levels with a certificate and a pin. First tonight, we recognize Dr. King for earning the Level Two recognition. Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Shirley Hallie for the achievement of Level Four this year. And finally, Dr. Smith has earned the highest level of recognition, which is Level Six. To receive this recognition, Dr. Smith achieved all five previous levels and passed a written test. And I got his scores on his test last week, so I know he passed. Dr. Smith will formally be recognized in February during the School Boards Association Annual Convention. Thank you to all three of you for your commitment to Kershaw County students and our district. And congratulations, Dr. Smith. Thank you for all that you do for our students and our staff. Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is public forum. No one has signed up. Under our own new business, our board policy review. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Smith, Dr. Goodwin, members of the board. Tonight's policy updates are in response to guidance from the 2024 South Carolina School Boards Association Policy and Legislative Manual. The proposed policy updates are based on court, are based on state and federal education-related legislation, court cases, and Department of Education guidance. So we're bringing you two updates tonight for information. The first policy is J I C I Weapons in Schools. A proviso in the fiscal year 2024-2025 State Appropriations Bill closed a loophole that was created when the Constitutional Care Second Amendment Preservation Act of 2024 was signed into law. The act continued to continue the general prohibition of firearms on school property. However, the exception for the proper storage and concealment inside a locked vehicle remained and did not consider that the new age parameters of 18 years and older would encompass high school students. Prior to the new law, the age requirement was 21 years old or older for those who could legally possess a properly-stored firearm on school property. So the proviso especially stipulates that the ability to possess a firearm on public school property is not extended to enrolled students. So we are proposing the highlighted changes in accordance with the new state proviso and with the recommendation from the South Carolina School Boards Association model policy. The, we added a couple of weapons that they included, as well as, in accordance with state law, the vehicle restriction applies to any enrolled student regardless of age. And then down at the bottom of the policy, we had in the old policy that the district would not provide educational services to students who were expelled because of a firearm. But we, we changed that language to the district generally, generally will not provide educational services because there are certain times that we need to provide those services or, and that would clear up that language a little bit for us. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. All right. The next policy we're bringing with revisions is J K E dash R, expulsion of students. So according to South Carolina Code of Law, Section 5963-240, school districts are now required to ensure certain additional information is included in the written notification to parents or legal guardians regarding expulsion for the remainder of the year and hearings associated with it. If expulsion proceeds, procedures are initiated, the parents or legal guardian of the student must be notified in writing of the time and the place of a hearing either before the school board or a person or committee designated by the board. The written notification to the parents or legal guardian must contain the right to have legal counsel present at the hearing, the right to question all witnesses, and contact information for a legal aid service provider, which may determine eligibility for free legal representation. The notification must also include the right of parents or legal guardian to access the investigative file in its entirety to hear all documents and videos, to include all documents and videos at least three days prior to the hearing with appropriate exemptions and redactions as required by FERPA. The law's effective date was May of 2024. And so we worked with our attorneys at this time to revise our expulsion notice letters to parents. And those have been updated. They've been updated since May, when this law was enacted. And so we're proposing this policy change, which essentially adds the language that the state law has, including the right to look at the investigative file, the right to question witnesses, and the contact details for a legal aid service provider being provided through our expulsion notices. So at this time, I'll answer any questions you have.
Yes. Mr. Ferris, just very quickly, and for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, it says the appropriate redactions and exclusions. That's, that's primarily written to protect other parties or other students who may have been involved in that particular incident.
Yes, sir. So if a witness's name was in there.
Rights as well.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will receive a report from the School of Law Conference. Coach Blackman was present, Mr. Roberts, Ms. Hallie, and I. So Ms. Hallie, you will give us the report, and anyone else that want to share, please feel free to do so.
Thank you. In your packet this evening, the highlights from the School Law Conference that took place from August 10th through 11th is in your packet. So I'm not going to just read it word for word. I'm just going to give the basic highlights from the conference. And the first topic was federal law trends and what this means for your board. The main point that I need to make that the topics that were discussed were expanding religious rights in the workplace, the rights of students, and requirements as outlined in the United States Department of Education, and the newly issued Title IX regulation laws. And the basic point that I'm trying to make here, there were so many cases that decided that have not been decided. And as soon as most of the case loads have been done, then they will get back to the districts and, and the school board will know what, what actions they take once those cases have been litigated. The IDEA 2024 was the next one, news updates and information you need to know. This gave, they were talking about special education and the IDEA 2024. The main point that, that I got of that, that when you are talking about the document, the main thing that we need to do as a board and teachers, et cetera, in the county is to make sure that all documentation is important and that all the procedures must be followed. That's the main thing she was trying to tell. They have to have your documentation, and you have to do your paperwork if you are going to be in compliance with the IDEA 2024. The next area was the grab bag. And as I said before, the grab bag section was avoiding legal risks from the top down. And they mainly talked about the ethics commission, and they're there to help us and to give us direction upfront about things that may be a conflict of interest and how potential conflicts can be avoided. And if there should be a conflict of interest policy, there should be one in our manual. And then they talked about the FOIA. There's more FOIA requests than FOIA litigation. It's rare. You get a lot of requests, but there are very few cases of FOIA litigation that's taking place at this time. And the main thing that was stressed there, that we have to harmonize with the superintendent to be, to prevent breaches of contract issues. And we have to finally recognize, too, the First Amendment's right. But we need to step clear of media chaos. Don't let things make it to the media before things are decided. Opposing the First Amendment without disruption to the school, these are some takeaways. And the first takeaway, the district should establish the type of forum it intends to create. In establishing the type of forum, the district is able to set the parameters and context of speech within the forum. As we know, we do have public forum, and we do have policies that address how, you know, how long you need to speak, with some of the things that you cannot bring. And if we set those and we establish the type of forum, then it will cut down on chaos. Number two, the district interest in regulating speech must be balanced with the students' and employees' rights. There has to be a balance there between the students' and the employees' rights. Any disciplinary action stemming from a student's or employee's exercise of such right should be reviewed in light of the district's interest in regulating the speech, and due process must always be followed. And the fourth, the district must be able to articulate the substantial interference or disruption to school operations beyond mere speculation. We can't just speculate that they are not doing what they're supposed to do when it comes to their First Amendment. We have to articulate it, and we have to be, to be able to substantiate it and not just speculate. The second, the next workshop, I can't talk about it, from the employee. This session clarified the board's role in employment matters, including what board members should or should not say. First of all, in order to avoid that, we need to honor our district policies. That's why policies are in place. Practice the duty of good faith and fair dealings. Be reasonable, or at least don't be newsworthy. In other words, don't be so quick to get out there and just talk so much. So be reasonable, but don't be so newsworthy. And also, we need to engage in an interactive process. And the final one that I went to was on school board's leadership, working together during times of controversy. And it basically deal with Beaufort County, and they wanted to ban almost 100 books to take them off the shelves in Beaufort County. The takeaway from that is that community involvement is a key factor there. Student involvement is important. But also, as a board, the board has to be involved in the process of book banning. And those were the, the ones that I attended. I'm quite sure my conference, they, they attended some, maybe attended something that I did not go to, but they have the opportunity at this time to say what they need to say.
So adding on to what Ms. Hallie said, the conference was a lot of fun. As attorneys was talking to us, I'm, I'm just kidding. It wa, it was very educational. The, the one that she talked about, I can't talk about that. I was, I was reminded as she was sharing, as, as members of the community come to us with issues. We, we do have a policy in place where if a complaint reaches the level of the board, and let's say a community member has come to me and kind of poured their heart out about this issue, I would have to recuse myself. I would not be able to speak to that. I would not be able to vote on that. So sometimes when community members come to us, the best advice they gave us was to tell them to reach out to administration. So that way, we can continue to do our role as board members in hearing those complaints and, and handling them if it reaches the board level. So that, that was the only thing I had to add. Ms. Hallie covered it very well.
You did very well, Ms. Hallie, as always. And David, you did a fine job. I don't have anything really to add. Can't talk about this. One key thing that I remember, they said, if you punch on a Facebook text message or whatever, social media that you like something, and that's your opinion about something, but that, that's your speech. It can be used with, for you or against you. So that, when you hit that button, understand that you know what you're doing. And that was one of the biggest takeaways from the conference when it came to what you can talk about and what you can't talk about. So that's, I had more notes, but I knew Shirley was going to be very well-prepared today. So she covered everything as far as I was concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, under my report tonight, just want to bring you just a little bit of good news. It's taken us a year to get all this straight, but you will recall that last year, we updated our policy regarding life-saving drugs. And we did that in response to the availability of Narcan for our schools. We're happy to say that now we finally have reached the point that we have the Narcan in place. We have two doses per school. We have the standing orders are in process or are complete. Standing orders are complete, and we are in the process of making sure everybody is properly trained in the use of Narcan. So we do have that within the schools. We also have, then, the school resource officers also have access to it. So that just adds another life-saving drug. We're really fortunate because the way we worded our policy last year didn't list specific drugs. It was life-saving drugs, so we don't have to change again this year. So we're, we're in good shape on that. So I want to thank Nurse Starling for navigating through this. It's hard to believe it took a year to navigate through this, but if you've watched the clips recently, you've seen other districts are just now getting theirs up and going also. So just wanted to report that.
Thank you, Dr. Goodwin. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation and retirement of certified and classified personnel? Employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified classified personnel? Properly motioned by Mr. Ira, seconded by Dr. King. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, and that's unanimous.
The motion to convene to open session. Properly motioned by Ms. Furnas, seconded by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Come on Todd, get with the program.
In the executive session we discuss resignation and retirement of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, and assignment changes and transfer of certified and classified personnel. Is there a motion to accept administration recommendation concerning employment matters? Properly motioned by Dr. King, seconded by Coach Blackman. All those in favor let it be known by raising your right hand. That's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn and close with prayer?
Second.
Properly motioned by Ms. Furnas, seconded by Mr. Iraick. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Heavenly Father we thank you for being with us this evening. As we leave here we ask that you put your arms of protection around us and dispatch your angels to protect us from all harm and dangers as we head home this evening. And when we get there help us to find all as well. And we'll give you all honor and glory that is due you. And it's in your name we pray. And it's your name we count it all done. Amen.
Amen.